Janine leaves for a trip.
No, she'll be here since she's here by seven.
Oh.
We're in a little.
It did?
They had me up next to the lighthouse, the old lighthouses.
Is that right?
Yeah. It's like, there's no eighty-two sixty-five up here. I'm looking at the map that was submitted with the.
They said, hey, put like street, not like road.
Yeah, and it said Lake Street. Yes, yes, but.
What, eighty-two sixty-five?
On the application, it says eighty-two sixty-five Lake Street.
Mine says Lake Road.
Okay. You're eating, right? Can't turn anywhere.
GPS struggled to find eighty-two sixty-five Lake.
It did?
It had me up next to the lighthouse, the old lighthouses.
Is that right?
Yeah. It's like, there's no eighty-two sixty-five up here. I'm looking at the map that was submitted with the.
They said, hey, put like street, not like road.
And it said Lake Street, yes, yes, but.
What, eighty-two sixty-five?
On the application, it says eighty-two sixty-five Lake Street.
Mine says Lake Road.
Hi Steve.
Hello.
Heaven's thing says sixty.
Oh, okay. Okay, this is on the link, so she can get on. All right. I talked with Matt a couple of times, you know, Kenny Martin. Edley wanted to know if we could restrict. The more restricted than what the. Pl- or zoning board was down on a lower level. He said, no, we couldn't do that, but we'll do. We mentioned about. Enforcing the maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
He also suggested in his review of the. Conditions, he looked at putting some limitation on the sizing trucks.
Size of number, yeah.
All right, and on how many unregistered. Vehicles there maybe, which I think makes.
Good advice, yeah.
As far as the berms go. I, I don't think. I ought to put berms be- below. The civil area. That area is the path the water flows through. I, I wouldn't want to damn that all. Whatever the climate goes.
Yeah, my, my question was more along the lines of the existing berms.
Right.
Are those. Are those what we want to see ultimately? Brandon mentioned something about removing the stone. From the, along fourteen.
Oh, yeah.
Earth berms, brimber berms and. But just learn more about that.
Which was, I believe, one of our original conditions there. Yeah, it says northwest and south. West would be that street side.
Right.
I'm not bothered by the stone. Uh, probably look up nicer than weed, than that leaping grass.
I'm not bothered by the look of the stone at all, the.
Weed, that's a different story.
Yeah, but if there's. If there's a better ability to control weeds through some other approach.
Yes, there. There's a three.
Two, four days. Uh. But I think. And then, not to, not to change from the berms, but the, what's topping the berms right now, those.
Arborvitae.
Arborvitae, so whether they are, the, the ones to the south, I see are pretty well burned. Along with the.
I don't know if that's burn or that's deer damage. The deer have been.
I was thinking maybe salt.
That could be too, but.
Yeah.
I know that the deer have been reaching havoc on.
Yeah, yeah, but if you, if you look, it doesn't go all the way around like the, like the deer tend to do. It, it appears to be just on the southwest face of the bushes, of, of the trees. Which would suggest that.
The slushes.
Yeah, bypassing traffic is blowing salt up against that.
That's, that's passing traffic, maybe. Cloud trucks blowing it out there.
Yeah.
So, maybe there's something that's more resistant to.
I don't know. It's not my world. I, I like them when they grow. I like them when the deer don't eat them.
Yeah.
But I don't know what my plants.
Not ever.
Well. No, we don't, we never bring, you know, fuck, they, they don't seem to bother replying to much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the ones that are on South Shore.
Pines and firs and spruce, they don't too, well. Spruce, I mean, the topside. The new growth.
Did you nibble at the new growth on the spruce?
Yeah, those, those, further up front by the sidewall, that first big evergreen. They'll never bother that. Knowing everything around it, you know.
Well, we had.
Yeah, nurseries have, I mean. Christmas tree farms have trouble with.
With deer.
Yeah, because they're so, those are so short and they're still tender.
Right.
But, you know, you gotta, then you've gotta think about, you know, pine is gonna grow out.
Right, that's why we.
So they are providing.
We have worked on that, you know.
So, back to the berms, if the berms were higher, would there be less interference with the trees? Or not?
Well. What does the berm do? If, if we want to create a hedge. The berm was. The berm was instant height.
Yeah.
You know, but you get a four-foot berm on a six-foot. Tree, and all of a sudden you got ten feet.
You've got ten feet of screen, yeah.
That, that.
I mean. If you don't have stone and you have grass, then how are you going to mow the grass?
That's true.
Um, so, I would go everything. Level and let it fill in tight. Best example of that is what Kendra's done on either side of. Of the.
The.
Those were planted by my father.
Which place?
Were in.
Oh.
Yeah, we planted those and they've filled in.
How long have they been in?
Now, they've been in. Twenty-five.
But.
They're huge.
They're huge, yeah.
They, they, it didn't take long. And even if you look at South Shore where he put those in.
That's what I was thinking.
Those are filled in real nice.
They have, yes. You seem to be bothered by the deer.
And that's only been about six years.
Yeah, right.
Well, is that a different species?
It is, it's much more of a, I, I can't tell the difference between pine, firs and. Arborvitae, but.
There are the one.
They're not arborvitae, but they're a soft feathered branch, it appears.
It could be. Steve, you got any ideas up there?
Yeah.
How about you, Alan? Unmute yourselves.
We need to unmute yourselves.
Yes, I just said I'm still learning. No, no ideas here on, on the newbie.
Well, by the way, went by your house today and. You don't get back soon, you won't recognize it.
Well, I've gotten some pictures and, and, and we're done. That's the way we're gonna leave it. What do you think?
Your neighbors are lovely.
It's Kevin and Alan.
Not Kevin. I guess Kevin will be, in hopes, by seven. His dog is breeding also and he was rushing it to bed.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna focus on getting the exterior done before we do anything else, so. Foreign neighbors.
Well, you know, I, I, I can picture the sighting on it, but, you know, compared to what it was a few years back, it's definitely changed.
It sure has. I hope for the better.
I would agree. Uh. Alan, you got any comments so far?
Is your microphone on, Alan? You're, you're unmuted, but we still can't hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. How's that?
No, no, no.
Okay, um, I was gonna say, I know that there is a type of arbor, arborvitae, like, there is a certain kind that is like deer candy. Deer just love them and they will like eat the heck out of them, but there are certain strains of arborvitae, arborvitae that. Um, that deer don't like, so I forget which one.
I forget which one.
My son has told me, but if we Google it, we should be able to find it. So, maybe we recommend that they use that type when they're planting it.
Well, I can also reach out to, uh. Sarah over at.
I was gonna say, talk to Sarah, yeah, she's an expert, yes.
We had great success with Crown Vetch.
Crown Vetch is amazing and it's great at holding the bank.
Yes.
Yeah. Uh. So, though, you're kind of suggesting eliminate the berms and.
Yeah, I mean. That's what my recommendation would be. I mean, those things are. They're gonna grow fairly quickly. And that way you can mow, at least you can mow. Almost underneath.
Well, it's a part of the problem, what he was, he was putting on top of that hill.
It's, it grew in the rocky, it's gonna grow, you know? Step on South Shore a little, and that was not good swally.
Um, we're talking about plantings on berms or non-berms on.
Oh, okay.
Our favorite project.
But can we step back a minute? I mean, we're just jumping in here. It doesn't seem to me that we've got any idea of what our timeline is, of this process. And how we're gonna tackle it. We just, all of a sudden we bring up berms. You know, we spent fifteen minutes on berms, is that, and how does that fit in to the whole nonsense?
Well.
And then we need to. Have our timeline. Um, not necessarily agreed on, Brandon's got to understand what the time is too. Otherwise, we're just, we're wasting a lot of time on these meetings.
Well.
And then during, like, this meeting, Brandon is ahead. Uh, so, are we going to say tonight, and this night, we're gonna allocate one hour to this discussion and then move on? You know, how are we, how are we handling this?
Well, it's confusing to me, as I, as I went through. The conditions that we've sort of laid out, it's not clear to me, I guess I should say it that way. It's not clear to me that what, what we have to do first, okay? Do we, do we want to come up with some general understanding on conditions first? Or do we, might it be useful to spend maybe some of this, this time before the start of the big meeting? To at least lay out a schedule of what we need to do so that he needs to know, he will know what. He also needs to do, because there's things that he will need to do as well. He needs to get the updated SWIP, he, he needs to get an engineer involved on that.
Uh, you can't get the engineer involved until we set the conditions so.
Okay.
Engineer can incorporate this into the site. And then the engineer at the village selects, will review all that, make sure that. His engineer got it right and is in agreement with what we want.
Okay, so, conditions comes first?
Yes.
And then. Then we can send him back in.
To the engineer.
With his architect, engineer, planner, whatever, come up with a complete site plan. And then, once there's a complete, complete set plan, um.
Our engineer will review that.
Well, he needs to do the SWIP too, right?
And he will, I knew the secret. Then, once. Once the engineers all agree. Then. Yeah. One can come off, I, I believe, it comes to us. And then to BEC, but it may be vice versa.
Is, is the complete site plan mean all three buildings or?
All, all four buildings.
Four buildings, yeah.
Four buildings, sorry. Even though we're delaying the start of two of them, right?
Yes, yes.
Well, and I think as, as I looked at the conditions that have been drafted for us. It seems to make sense to me that part of the site plan effort that he needs to develop. Is taking some of these more specific landscaping and screening ideas. And making those part of a landscaping site plan that becomes part of the site plan package. Does that make sense? So, so we can see in a, in a picture.
That will all be part of what we get back.
I hope so.
It's gonna be, yeah, yeah.
But, but I can pull out one result, one theater, and then show the landscape on it. Uh. So, I'm gonna use.
So there's a landscape plan, it's a greenage plan.
That's right. And when Kevin gets on, we'll find out whether it goes to the BEC, then back to us or us and then to DEC.
Okay. So, what's, what's the plan tonight? What do we want to accomplish?
What I would like to accomplish is to get done a remake. Amongst ourselves on what the conditions will be. Then we can give a preliminary. That, which is, um. Preliminary for construction of three sixty-by-one-twenty storage buildings and one sixty-by-hundred storage building. Uh, in the LC board and our zone districts will use, oh, uh, as permitted by the special use. Permit subject to the following conditions. I think, that's.
Okay, well, we got, I mean, there's a lot there.
Right.
There's a whole discussion over buildings and how we want to approach those. There's a whole discussion over landscaping.
We don't have much control over architecture.
No, but there is.
But we, we don't, we don't, for other properties, we don't always talk about landscaping. That's not part of the site plan.
Well, it, it has been on some.
On some, okay.
But this is a different kind of animal, because of the objections of the neighbors.
Yeah.
Some difficult objections.
Yeah, we, I thought we can.
We have control over.
Yeah.
Landscape, but we don't have control over architecture.
Over what?
Architecture.
Thank you.
So, wha- what are you thinking about the buildings?
Well, have we, have we determined, um. Access, egress? Have we determined heights? Is that all?
Yeah, yeah, we talked about that last.
Okay, have we written it down?
Yes, it's in the notes. I believe it was twenty-six feet, or was it twenty?
Yeah, but ultimately that needs to come back as part of the overall.
Right.
Plan, right.
Along with, you know, access drives and.
The windows, the doors, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we put in the emergency escape door and window and.
Where do, where does our sixty-two day?
That was my question.
Requirements.
And started at our last meeting, that's.
Okay.
That's why we have to be, not take too much time.
That's why, if we can get the conditions done and get it to the engineers, if the engineers try to defeat them. We can ask for another thirty days. Uh, Brandon, not going to be upon one of them.
Right.
We did that last time and lasted, what, eighteen months still?
Yeah, it took a long time.
Yeah, yeah. But that was a much more complex.
Right, with the marine that involved and.
And we were doing the original seeker and.
So our sixty-two days starts on the nineteenth. Uh. Starts on the twenty-first? Twenty-first, yeah, twenty-one, I'm missing nineteen, so. About somewhere around the. Twenty-third of June, you know, four out of ten, but.
But that's, from the life. So, uh, given to explain to. Uh, Brandon, Brandon decided he wanted not meet last week.
Right.
That, you know, if the engineers take longer than. The next not on us, but, you know, we're under the gun. The, the option is we burn down and say. Go back and we'll pick it up.
Yeah, that just. That engenders ill will, so I think we want to keep.
Well.
Going together as best, as best we can with him. And he understands that we've been working diligently on it.
Right, and he knows that we tried to.
Right.
You know, at that meeting, but he felt that he didn't want to give the image that he was getting special treatment. Or that we were doing a rushed job.
Well, I don't think we want to feel rushed either.
Well, I, I get that.
Yeah.
I get that. Uh.
So, after the DEC review, we would. Uh. We would work on the seeker?
Well, the engineers will go over the seeker and present all that to us.
Okay.
So we accept. The site plan and the seeker.
So, would it be helpful to put all of these things in a time like chronological order of when and how they should? You know, kind of take place?
I can draw that up and send it out tomorrow.
Yeah, I think they'd be, you know, it'd be good to have something like that, I agree, Alan. Uh, just so we're, we're all thinking the same way, and I think the point that Phil made, so that Brandon can see that. This was the process that we're.
Yes.
Follow as well, so, yeah.
Um. Were there any issues? We'll, we'll discuss this again, we had Brandon here, but are there any? Uh, number seven there. Uh, which is no outside storage, you'll be familiar on the other level.
All right. They write this out, or you should, oh, come on in.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I think we should, they would say no outside storage and or parking.
Yeah, I added that as well, for parking of vehicles or trailers. Yeah. I think if he does identify a mural. That he wants to put on the, on the side of the building, we should, we should have some. Uh, I don't know, there's gonna be legal power, but can we?
We, we can call.
Yeah.
I had a, I was told it's kind of tricky when you get into regular speech. But.
Yeah.
You know, if it's a water skiing. If there's a historical one, that's all. His face. That's all.
There's a really nice one that they just fell, fell, uh, finished in Williamson there at the Thane's Building, I think it is, across from the McDonald's right on one oh four. That might, something like that, I think, is a nice historical depiction of kind of, um, over time, but.
Right, it is. Uh, uh, you know.
You're not gonna see the size of those buildings.
What's that?
You're not gonna see the sides of those buildings.
Oh, okay.
We'll bunch it out to him.
Gotcha.
That's me, I know. No, he, he should know, he will put things there, and now we're talking to him. But, gee. The word. Beating. By the way, that was a very good, uh. Well, I thought you said.
I'm a joke. Yeah.
I sent that to my brother who has an HOA in Florida. Says, what would you reach him to do? He's, he's, it drove her mind, man. Okay. Okay. All right. Sit this one down. Read that, anything else? I have a question for you, Mr. Cadway.
You, I'm sorry, me?
Yeah, uh, like, so, dog me up. Sending his two daughters to sell. School camp, whatever.
Yes.
Uh, I haven't seen any requests for medical. Information, insurance information.
It's all part of the registration process. There's uh, there's forms that have to be filled out if there are any uh, known. Allergies.
That part was done. You know, insurance definitely.
You mean the, the kids' medical insurance?
Yeah.
No, I don't know that we want to put ourselves in a position of directing their care. Their well-being, yes, but their care maybe not.
Okay. Please, we'll stop about our regional head.
Yeah, that's all.
That was taken.
And if, you know, one of them has an inhaler or needs to take, uh, you know, a dose of medicine at noon time, that, there's a process for.
I did mention one who's, uh, probably, uh, seriously, you know.
We have, uh, we have, I think, uh, not last year, year before was our, uh. Process or beta run with the ISAL program, which is designed for kids who are on the autism spectrum. Yeah.
Well, she's sponsored, and she's a regular class music.
And she's just like the rest of the kids out there.
Okay, all right, we've got forty-five seconds here. Uh. My phone, it's seven o'clock already, but let's go ahead and begin. Okay. Our meeting was advertised. And we're waiting times and posted on the building website. And we have a fourth. We have. Uh, who's Evinor?
Janine Fogarty.
Bill Kelly.
Bill McKee.
Up top, we have Steve Taylor and Ellen Farnum.
Hello.
Hello.
So we've got a full look here. Our first action is to review the minutes of the April twenty-first meeting. Hopefully people have had a chance to look those over.
I had a question or comment about. One of the paragraphs, when I was looking at my home computer, I knew it was on page three. I don't know where it is here. As I'm just reading them from top to bottom, uh. There was, it was part of the discussion that we were having with Brendan Martin about his, uh. About the dredging and that sort of thing, uh. And the paragraph starts, Linda, with the words Bill McKee asked for a timeline. Okay, uh, and in the second line there, it says, uh. What the storage buildings will be built in fall, Brandon said the grading and remaining planning board conditions and dredging would be done first. He said it would cost four thousand to six thousand dollars to do the dredging. I think the number is much bigger than that, but I don't know what, what he totals. Does anyone else remember?
Four hundred.
Four hundred to six hundred. I recall it was a.
Four hundred thousand to six hundred dollars.
Staggering number.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, um, in that same paragraph, Linda, um. There's that line that starts, I need to read it again, Brendan, Brendan said the bushes would come out and he would put leaping grass near the street. Bruce said north, south, and west sides would have arbor bedding. Bill Kelly said. Again, the western side, perhaps the building could be relocated so it wasn't so close to the road. What did I want to get? Bruce said that would not work since it needed sewage drainage, but it's really not sewage drainage, it needs setback from the. Uh, sewer, uh, right away. So just.
So.
Clarify that.
Would not work since. So, so you want to change to what I'm sorry?
Would not work since it needed setback from the sewage or from sewer.
Right away.
Right away.
Setback from the sewer.
Right away, yes.
Okay.
I hope that wasn't too picky, but those two sort of stuck out to me.
Okay, I, I will make those changes.
Thank you. Other than that, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion was passed, minutes are approved.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. All right. Thank you, Randy. With our first fence review, uh, we're going to start with, uh, Jerry Ring. If you step up, Mr. Ring, uh, tell us about your project, please.
Okay. Uh, just to give a quick history, I'm giving in the letter of intent. To the best of understanding of what took place, but basically in March, March thirtieth. We got a text with pictures from my mother and sister. We live here in Ontario. We were in Salt Lake City at the time. And the, uh, the picture showed that the, the arborida, sorry, the rose and charon. Uh, hedge that we had between the properties. It's a big mature hedge, six foot tall. About every five feet, and one of the plants, and that went for about eighty feet. It's a big, big hedge that separated the two properties and gave us privacy. Uh, was ripped out. And, uh, it shocked us that that was happening. So my wife called Kevin here. He gave us some good advice and, um, we called a surveyor locally here. At the property surveyed the eighteenth of April, uh, in time frame, we found a copy. And it had some preliminary stakes in the ground to indicate that. The, the hedge was on our side of the property and that there was a large. A fifth-wheel trailer parked across the property line. So, uh. We, uh, had the survey finally completed. Uh, on May second. And at that point. The neighbor, uh, Deb Dutcher. Had a discussion with me about, you know, what, what the fence is going to look like. In, in the materials that you have, this kind of talk. So that, that set of materials. Really tried to, to deal with what would a fence. Do to basically replace the privacy that we have lost. And, um, it was a bigish fence, as you all see. But discussions with this neighbor, she says, well, I'm losing my, my view out to the lake. So I had a discussion with Susan. Over the weekend and we came up with what, what would be sort of the minimum required to provide the proper process for the safety. And that the fence could be, uh, cut down by twenty feet. And meet the requirements of blocking the building from our views. Without, uh, messing up the view that Deb had. So we don't impact view with this shorter fence. For them at all. So I'm basically like to amend what you have. To be this twenty foot shorter. And it will be shorter on the end that's closest to the lake.
In the north.
To the north, yeah.
Which is the six-foot section.
This, that's correct, yes.
So if I'm understanding correctly, uh, maybe just to finish your sentence, uh, the. Six-foot section would be about sixty feet long.
That's correct.
Okay.
In the end, it would be sixty feet long, six foot high.
And then the four-foot section out in the direction of the street would remain at about two hundred and twenty feet.
Uh, it, the, the four-foot section itself, I think, was seven two feet according to the.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
It, it, I, I have gotten a fence quote where they.
Okay.
Seventy-two feet of the four-foot and now sixty feet of the six-foot.
That's sixty feet.
So the six.
Includes the subtraction of the.
That's correct. It started out as eighty, subtract twelve, it's now sixty.
So it's sixty feet of six-foot.
Correct.
And seventy-two feet of four-foot.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to, she's just taking notes, I, we just want to get it. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And the fence is well clear of the road. So there is no obstruction of view.
It does cross a, uh. A turnaround that might be put in. Uh, that crosses the property line. We will have to, uh, cut that down, but.
Clarification, who, who is the neighbor, the name of the neighbor that you're accommodating here?
Deb Dutcher.
Dutcher, thank you. So that's not no longer on my side?
Like, Deb Dutcher is the home that's behind, she doesn't have the lake access, she's one in.
If you got your, do you have some survey map? Next, that's, that's, that's right there.
Oh, and the little house.
The little house, yeah.
Okay.
You need the, another nap?
No, I, I mean, I know Siders is property directly to the west.
Yes, that's the, um, problem Charles.
And the, the new stakes that we saw are.
Yeah.
The.
They're survey.
The new state property line.
Yeah.
Okay.
Between, uh, land survey company. And they've only recently, I think they finally completed the job on West Second.
Yeah, so I, I misunderstood because part of the narrative that we received. Was, uh. The six-foot high fence, the red line, is to be on the property line approximately eighty feet long, with four-foot high fence also on the property line. Approximately two hundred and twenty feet long, but that's incorrect, okay, so it's seventy-two feet.
Yeah.
Okay, the two hundred and twenty is the entire length of the line.
That's my fault.
Oh, okay, fine. I, well, not a problem, okay, as long as we understand. The, uh. The product that you would use is the aluminum panels?
For the four-foot fence, yeah.
Okay.
The six-foot, uh, will be a wooden fence that's referred to as shadow box because there's a set of. On both sides, so it looks the same on both sides.
Terry?
Yeah?
Have you had any contact with Ed Carnathan?
Ed Carna?
Your neighbor to the, uh, east.
Oh, Steiger, Ed Steiger.
To the east.
Oh.
It's Paul. Paul.
Paul, I'm sorry, Al, he goes by Ed sometimes.
Okay, no, we haven't, haven't seen them this year yet.
I, I did speak with him and he's fine with the, with the proposal.
It, it really wouldn't impact his side of the property at all.
That's correct.
Mr. McKee, you have any questions?
I don't have any question.
I have none.
Hold on.
No, I have none. Do you like the motion?
If nobody has any more questions, I would. All right.
I know that we approved, uh, fence for eight-two by seven Lake Street. Extension to construct a four-foot high fence being seventy-two feet in length and a six-foot fence. Being sixty feet in length per plot drawing.
Recommend that to the planning or to the zoning board, right?
Yes. Oh, thank you, to the zoning board, thank you for that.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? There are no opposition, it is passed, uh. The zoning board should meet. In one week, so on the twelfth, and this is another series of these types of questions.
Because that's the same thing.
Okay. Well, if it was all four-foot, we could save.
I'm ashamed.
Okay. I'd like to thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a meeting. All right, next up is Michael Bates, Mr. Bates, would you step up if you're here?
Uh, yes, good evening.
He's somewhere up there. Oh, there you are, Mike, okay. Mike, would you like to, uh, tell us about your project, please?
Sure, it's just a, um, a vinyl privacy set, uh, fence on the south border of my property. Um, which is now my permanent residence. Um, I don't know, I'm sure you're familiar with it, but there's businesses on both sides of the property. Backs up to a marsh, uh, which I'm not sure if that's, um. Sodas Point Village or Sodas Own or, I'm not sure about that marsh, but, uh. Um, it's very similar to Daryl's Vinyl Fence, two houses down from me. Um, it's six by eight panels with the posts. And it is well off the road, I believe, uh, in the intent letter, pull it up here. Um, it's quite a bit far from the road, but my goal is to put it inside the property line. Um, next to the Marina is, you know, give myself some room there so I don't have any issues down the road. I'm not worried about losing a little bit of land, uh, and about a foot in back from the back property line. And, uh, yeah, it's just a little bit of privacy, uh, as I tend to make this, or enjoy this private. Residency and, uh, use the backyard more next year with, uh, with the privacy. I don't think it hinders anybody's views. Um, the only view really would be to that marsh, uh, in the back of the property, so. It's going to be self-installed, uh, it's, you know, these, these are costly, uh, fences are costly these days, I found out. And, uh, that's the summation of it.
All right, so. Let's hear, you've got a hundred and. Let's see, you've got a hundred and forty and a quarter feet. And twenty two foot off of that gets down to a hundred. Eighteen and another foot. So looking at about a hundred and seventeen foot of fence, is that correct?
Let me pull it up real quick then, uh I apologize, but uh. Let's see here. The. Length of the fence would be a hundred and sixteen in total length, a hundred and sixteen feet. So it's gonna be uh. Twenty two feet from the front property line and a foot in from the back property line. If that meets the uh zoning and and such.
One seventeen.
One sixteen, actually.
Sixteen, all right.
Questions from the board? Uh Mr. Bates, uh the. The product cut that we were sent uh sort of uh. Milked its way out on the uh on what was sent to us, so we really didn't get a sense of what what is being used. You described a a six foot high fence, uh is it? Uh and it's it says it's gonna be a vinyl privacy fence, uh white in color?
Yes, so I did attach the uh both pictures um of the fencing and the posting is required. It's six by eight, so it's six five, it's six foot high, eight feet long sections and. What was the other question?
Those are, yes, and the posts themselves will be uh same height as the fence and also in vinyl?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
There you go.
Now I see.
Yeah, it's gonna be very similar to what Daryl had installed, I believe, last year.
I know what Daryl has, so. Any other questions from the board?
Uh you're aware that you will need to maintain that one foot on the other side, correct?
Yes, yes, of course, uh I will definitely maintain that and and yeah, I I've been proactive about uh. That whole side of that uh, the south side, including the marina side as well as the back, so I certainly understand that.
Oh, any questions?
No.
None here?
Right, Jase, I have a motion.
I recommend that we. Suggest to the zoning board to approve. Fence construction seven four one eight fourteen, to construct a six foot high fence for plot drawing.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? There are no opposition, it is passed. Mr. Bates, the zoning board will be meeting next week right here, so. Uh we'll talk to them, okay?
Okay, great, I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you.
Take care.
Okay, now Dylan, Dylan France?
France, yeah, just like your country.
Language or the country?
The country.
I've seen it both ways on the documents.
I know, but it is France. Tell us about your project.
Uh yeah, so um I, me and my wife live at eight two six five Lake Road. Um just through the four way, um on top of the hill there. Uh and we're just looking to put a four foot fence around the boundary of our property. Um. Being up on the hill, um having a fence, we feel is gonna provide a little bit of extra safety, uh so we have a three year old. Um to prevent her from going down the hill and uh you know, potentially in any danger, uh we had our dog. Uh actually get hit last summer. Um. And so we're looking for a little extra security on the front hill. Um and then just around the boundary of our property, just to give us that defining property line. Um and just like an overall aesthetic to the property itself. Um it's a simple wooden fence, um with posts set two feet uh in cement. Four foot above ground and then just wooden rails, so just a nice simple wooden fence.
You want to attach mesh off your side of it?
Um we've explored that option, um just for the extra security of the dog. Um but our current dog right now is excellent off-leash, um and so um we're fairly confident that just that. Set boundary, like she's not. Well, the three, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um we've explored that option, um.
Well, you're saying wide distance off around fifty plus feet. Uh it's simple split rail or something like that, uh. Quite familiar, uh. Over at our urble all the time. But uh always been amazed you guys know that.
Yeah, and then I do the front with a push hammer, it's torture.
Uh sure.
And that hill in the back is. Too aggressive.
Great in the winter for sledding.
Yeah, I'll bet it's great, great. Coming back up.
I can say. You're doing that, invest in your total wealth. Okay.
Is it Lake Street or Lake Road?
Lake Road.
Okay, cuz the.
I know.
It's, okay, that's why I was confused.
Oh, I I get that, that took me a minute, uh. Luckily, they had contacted me to find out what they needed, uh so I leave order.
I'm just. Are you gonna move the shed down in the back to make way for the fence, or are you gonna stop the fence and restart it?
Stop and restart.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, so it's tricky, so luckily we're not putting it in all at once, I don't know if that matters. But the shed is actually ours, our rules. Uh when we bought the house, we signed uh just a land use agreement with him. Um with him telling us that it would be removed from our property. Um and so we're we're kind of hoping this is the catalyst, you know?
And no gates?
I it will be left open.
Any questions? Alan?
I guess my only question is, um you know, I understand the dog is good on off-leash, but. You know, the the drawing of the fence, aren't you worried that your child could still crawl through there? They have ways of doing that, you know? So if that's the main reason for putting up the fence. Um I just wonder if that's really the steepest thing, but that's that's my only question.
Yeah, I understand that concern, um. I'm I'm just thinking, that's a piece of the reason we would like a fence. We do believe that it would also add a nice aesthetic to our property and give it a more. Uh maybe it's cliche pony, but um. Just a different look from the outside.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like a motion? I move that we. Forward this to.
No, we can approve this.
Oh, we can approve this one, oh, because four foot, see, you guys got me. I move that we approve the four foot high fence for plot drawing at eight two six five Lake Road.
Thank you for saying that.
You're welcome.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? There are no opposition, see Kevin, uh when you can, if you permit.
Beautiful, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Just out of curiosity, did the checklist help?
Say that again?
Did the checklist help?
Yes, thank you very much.
It helps us a lot too, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, have a good night.
You too.
Well.
Bruce Brandon, Harry uh project that ran late, he is about three minutes away from the village hall unless he's walking in right now. Just as a heads up, he called uh seventeen minutes ago to say he was eighteen minutes away.
Right, so give him a couple minutes, cause Matt's not here online either, so.
Okay, I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Thank you. Kevin, while you're there, a question. Once the engineers. Most that reviewed everything and. Does it go to DEC, then back to this, or from us to DEC?
Yeah, there'd be a communication between the DEC, uh cuz if the DEC doesn't like what the engineer says, so let's say the engineer. Wants um certain overflows or certain rock or something. And the DEC doesn't want that, there'd have to be communication there, um and then it would come back to you guys once everything is all thought and up.
Uh as the village uh. Look into getting a engineer.
No, we haven't done it yet, just cuz I don't know um when you guys will be ready with the site plan. So once I know the preliminary site plan is, like, he has his conditions and you guys give me the go ahead. And he gives his engineer the go ahead, and then I have him in hand, I'll bid out for the work. So that we know how big the pack it's gonna be for the SWIP.
Did you ever finish your house in uh Rhode Island?
Doing the backsplash right now, so ninety nine, ninety percent. That's nice, it's uh good to be done with something.
Well, I I remember that you were having some headaches with the garage, wasn't it?
I did a garage and an addition over the top, I actually served as jury duty. This uh spring, I mean this fall, not fall, this winter. For grand jury, so I had to get back here every Monday for jury duty for three months. While I was trying to do my projects. How does that go? Eh, not well, especially when all the jurors wouldn't show up and we wouldn't have a meeting and and I drove back, you know, from. Two in the morning till seven to get there. Now, no, it was a good experience though, it really was. I I I, it was worthwhile. How many cases did you? We do like five or six every every Monday. Yeah. And a few can carry it over. Uh a good variety, it was it was fun, I mean. People didn't ask too many questions, and of course I had to ask questions. So I was sometimes booed a little bit for delaying lunch, but uh. It was uh, you know, in in grand jury, you're allowed to. Basically, they give you only as much information as you need. To kind of make a decision, they don't go overboard, and so. I kind of found if you question a little bit, you get more information that they are holding back. So it was kind of a little game that the ADAs would play. And they actually have witnesses outside that they wouldn't bring in unless. Oh, really? Unless we didn't seem to be going along, but we, you know. They brought some good work towards uh. The grand jury, I mean, they they had their detail done, so it was fun. Oh, it was a fun, but it was. Interesting. Yes, it was kind of hard for you to catch. In just a general topic, um you know, like you mentioned last week, Bruce, about the metal buildings and and. That, you know, you'd have to amend the code. Because there isn't really much. You know, in the code of of. Architectural and what you guys look at and and that, but it seems like there's a real. You know, metal buildings seem to be a lot more common, maybe a place in the code. Defining a little bit more your planning board's role on. I know it's a hard, you was to process, amend the code, but. Garages that are approaching a small home, so amending is a lot easier and writing brand new. Well, you know, whatever you call it, I mean. It just seems that, you know, I fear a neighbor plunking it. Thirty by thirty five by twenty foot building next to my house, I think that that would be. Something I would want, and if your code doesn't prohibit it, then you're helpless and I'm helpless.
Hello, Brandon.
Hello, sorry, randomly.
It's all right.
You're right.
My son just called me and he said, okay, Dad, Mom said it's time to come up, I'm shot and eat. I'm like, yeah, I just ran out of there, I'm sorry.
All right, Brandon, we. Uh whatever, most of this last time. Uh we've been working on conditions, updating. Can apply from the original on some of it, um. Uh we're working on, we updated conditions, uh. I do. Need to talk to you, uh you know, there's a sixty two day turnaround. So the application starts till we're supposed to make a decision. Depending on how long the engineers. And DEC take, you know, we may need to ask for an extra thirty days. I'm not asking for unlimited time, and I'm not asking for it now. I just want you to understand that if you can't get DEC and the engineers back in time. An extra little timeframe would keep us from having to burn it down. And we don't want. Okay? Uh that said. Where do we want to start here on these conditions?
I think it's also worth worthwhile putting out to Brandon that one of the things that we asked Bruce to do was put together a. Sort of a. Yeah, just a a listing of here's, here's all the things that need to be done, okay? Just so we're organized and going through them as efficiently as possible, and you know what that schedule looks like. And that we're trying to all need to move on on that to get all of that stuff done. And not have to drag out like it is once before, okay?
I understand. Like where are you looking for?
Go right ahead.
That's what I get to think much. Okay, uh. The first condition would be that two lower buildings are to be constructed first. The construction of the two upper buildings only to be built one at a time once maximum capacity of the other buildings have been exceeded as demonstrated to this aspect from the village C E O. You know, that you had already discussed that the bottom two would be the first. Brandon, move over here instead.
So just, he can have copied that this for him.
We don't. Do you have?
Do you have extra copy?
Well, this is
Here, can I have a pen?
Well, I've got
Okay.
All right.
You need a pen?
Without you.
Thank you.
You need one?
I don't think so.
Okay, so I have yours first.
Yeah, good chairman.
I was going to suggest on, on that one, Bruce, that we, uh, talk with Kevin to see if he wants to be in the driver's seat of, of, uh, making that assessment or whether that should be bumped to you and your satisfaction, but it, I don't think it needs to come to the entire back to the entire board.
Yeah.
It's up to you guys on that one because, uh, I have to, I mean, I can do it a couple of different ways. We can issue a C of C on every single building or just on the project.
And my, my confusion just on that a little bit is you're saying capacity is full, right? Well, it's a little late to build them when the capacity is full. Right? So, so everything happens in the fall. So if I build two in September or let's say two in July, right? And now you're telling me, don't build the two up here until October when I fill the two down there and I need them?
Well, can you get people to commit?
We have enough boats to fill all four right now.
Commit?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so if you, if you demonstrate that commitment to, I guess we're going to put that in your, your lap first, okay?
Yes, okay, that, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm just saying, yeah, as far as I can show you what we stored and what we wrapped last year and our, we wrapped more than than the amount of boats that go in, in these barns. So that's what I'm saying, I have enough to do it.
Demonstrating and will all those that have stored outside, I'm assuming you're going to charge them a premium the inside.
It actually costs about the same and it does work less. I don't ask, I don't ask.
So they're not going to be saying, oh, I better go somewhere else instead of being stored.
Well, I, I can speak to that because I used to have friends who wrapped mine with it. And then Sue Basset pointed out, I could take money by storing it indoors without being wrapped.
Oh, really?
So it's like a no brim thing.
Yeah, no, it's, it's definitely when you're wrapping, you got a chance of getting something to the gel coat or any of the fabrics while you're heating it up. Um, you got the guys that are, you know, doing like a trapeze on there, trying to get it all done. There's just so much. And then the waste in the spring now, now we have, you know, dumpsters full of plastic and whether they wanted or not to paint, to wrap it, that's a game, so it's going, it's going inside.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What was the concern of, uh, doing a staged construction versus uh, building all at once? Were, were you guys afraid of, uh, empty buildings or what was the, how did this, um, staged building come and play?
We didn't want empty buildings. So if he can demonstrate that he's got the customers, then I don't have a problem.
When, when I originally said that we would do it in the stages or steps, I didn't think it was to keep them on building. What I, what I was trying to say is there wouldn't be four buildings being halfway built, you know? I would, I would finish one, then move to the next, finish that, but it might be, you know, this month, next month, you know, it could be weeks. You know, depending on how fast it goes, but I guess that's what I was saying is I wouldn't have all of them in construction stage at once. They would be completed and ready and the next one built, completed and ready and the next one, you know, and go in that aspect instead of looking like four buildings under construction at one time.
I think we could leave number one as is, if you can demonstrate that you got the, uh, demand. The second one, all conditions must be met prior to the commencement of construction of the first two structures or preparation or outside material storage, uh, that will be completion of the updated SWIP. The, uh, pool from the D E C. All known as the SWIP would be fully implemented in construction. Constructed prior to the beginning. In other words, you got to get the SWIP done first.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, there was all grading, addition, removal, fill if necessary. All landscaping, screening and planning shall be fully uh, implemented full.
So the other thing I would say, when, when we're talking about landscaping, some of these, in order to work and build them, I have to get equipment around them. So I'm going to be damaging all my stuff in order to
Well, on top, you already got here, invited there.
Right.
I think, I think what we're saying is we this area is going to get filled. Getting that plan and everything because your equipment's not going to be updated.
Right. The backside of this, we're going from my understanding, we're going to, this was all going to get landscaped, right? That's where you can see, can't really see this. And this is where the dredge material is going to go to do that. So
Whatever drunk is going to go on there. Get that done.
Right, but if we're not dredging until another year, then that won't be, this part of it wouldn't be done, that particular part.
I thought you said to us last meeting that
That we're just going to add on top of it.
Well, that, that dredging may not take place for several years if, if water level stays reasonably hot, okay?
Correct.
Uh, so I guess it would be our desire to have that, have those, uh, plant, yeah, the those slopes uh, dressed and planted, okay?
Right.
Uh, because the longer they stay, they stay exposed, the more we get complaints, okay? The more it's going to look unchanged.
Right, I guess that's why I'm asking the board to work with me on that backside where nobody can see because it's between the barns. That's, that's where I'm saying, instead of me putting dirt that can slide off right now, it's rubble and stone. You know what I mean? So now it, nothing is washing off that hill. When I go to do it, then I definitely got to see it right away. You understand? That's why I'm asking you to work with me a little bit. On the other parts, a hundred percent and you said something about landscaping around here and, and around, and around here. These, these ones are not here yet, but I'm going to have to get the building, you know, built and I can do it. Normal, normal protection, um.
You can drop and then you put your plant in.
Yeah.
It'll make it look pretty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess that's just what I mean. It just seems like putting, putting in, in the opposite, I could, I, I guess I would ask if you were going to work that is, is let me build it and then landscape around that one and build them, you know what I mean? Or, or something along, I don't need to do the landscaping until it's, the building's up.
Okay.
You know, something along that line.
Are you in a position to be able to landscape that before the construction of building number of, of number three, which would be the northwest corner?
What was the question?
Are you in a position to dress that slope before you build building number three?
This back, the back or the side?
The back.
It won't be in the position until we
Dredging for that.
Okay, once the bedding is built, are you in to dress the slope?
Yes, because the sewer line, we had to take, we had to stay so far away from that. So there is a, a number of feet there um, room, you know, for, for that particular area that you're talking about. But I guess I would ask that, you know, if, if you guys are worried about landscape, if I do the two bottom ones, landscape and dress them up, then do the top one, landscape and dress that up and do the other top one, landscape and dress it up.
And be okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, there, we're doing them in, yes, I could have ordered and tried them down there.
Um, where's those?
Are there anything, is there anything though that should come under three that can be done before?
Are we, I still have another question, number two.
Oh.
Were we in the prior one, we talked about stormwater, we mentioned it, are we being at anywhere in this document? Or we don't need to worry about that? Okay. Well, it was here separately, that's why I'm asking.
Uh, step number two, where, uh, updated SWIP
Right.
from the D E C.
Right, I'm just saying, our last list, we had it listed separately, so we don't need to do that again. Okay, that was my question. Okay, now I'm going to
Okay, well, in number two, C, then you remove that or put it somewhere else. Well, or, or reword it.
Yeah, just
Just say landscaping, cleaning and planting, uh, will be
In consecutive with the barns?
Yeah, will be completed around the perimeter of each building as each building is completed or something like that. And then the, is that also to say, Brandon, uh, the perimeter landscaping, can that be, can that be completed?
I would say, do it in that same manner, that's kind of while you're, while you're working on this barn, you're going to do that perimeter. You're working on this one, you do that perimeter, get up to here, do that perimeter.
Okay.
You know what I mean? That would kind of be the, the areas, I, I feel like all four, all four corners.
Yeah, I think the only thing I'd like to see, and I think we all like to see is at least the fourteen Fourteen quarters.
Which that is planted right now, though. I mean, I know we have to change the way it's planted, but right now I wouldn't unplant that. We could just leave that planted and then when I do unplant that, it would be replanted. I would only be unplanted that to, to change the landscape to a way your new design is.
Okay, what are your thoughts in that regard? What, because if one of the things that we need to overlook is, is berms, okay? And the survival of berms or the, or how beef berms will be constructed. Uh, are you intending to keep the berms along fourteen? Or you just don't, okay? And if you do intend to keep them, would you keep them in stone like they exist?
Right, right now it's, it's like a ditch, it's stone, not really that, that berm. I mean, I understand that it goes up to them trees, but I thought we said that we were going to do, the stone was coming out and that you wanted, uh, berms of, of like weeping grass, because I said that I didn't want to have to go up there and mow it and you said buy, buy a certain type of weeping grass that didn't have to be mowed. And that was, and that, and then you wanted them in, in shapes much like a golf course berm around it. So you wanted them in irregular shapes. And then that's why I just want to be a row of trees. You have, you know, like a berm with some trees on it and then cluster and then it would go to another area and then come back up and down. You said you wanted it more like that, which I think that's a good, um, way because then if we are putting some type of murals on the building, you know, you're going to have a cluster and then as them berms come down where you would show a mural and, and the berm won't be there, right? And go up and then another berm with some trees between a couple of them.
As I told You know, we talked about all of those ideas. I don't know that we settled on anything, but, you know, I think all of that is sort of open, so I was looking to see.
Yeah, that, well, I guess what I just said is kind of what my plan was to do.
What, what would be the D E C is for you to maintain?
Well, that's why I put stone up there, but, you know, because you're going to spread the stone, but otherwise, but you guys didn't want, you wanted more green at the time. So that's why I changed to
I didn't want more height at the time, okay?
Right, but I mean, you don't get any more height than the evergreens, be perfectly honest. You're never going to, you're never going to build dirt that high, is that evergreens going to grow?
No, but if you start out with dirt high and then put an evergreen on top, you, you get immediate height, which was I think part of our objective at the time.
Yeah, but then maybe, uh, do something to grow in.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct.
Give us something to take root.
Top of that, uh, still, there was nothing.
One of the things that has occurred to me and, and maybe this is, it feeds into you getting your thoughts down on paper, Brandon, is coming up with a landscaping plan. So that we, we're all on the same page, we can all look at the same picture and understand what, what the finished product is going to look like.
I understand. First, I got to know that it's hard to do plans, you know, not to be, but, but every time I spend money to do plans, you guys, you change them all. So I feel like, I feel like you guys should do a better plan.
What Bill was saying is part of the final goes the engine to have that laid down, not to do something special and come back and go.
Part of the site, but
Yeah.
Everything spelled out. These plants you hear raised, new areas.
My thought was to do away with berms altogether, making it easier to mow. Just on either side, you get pretty close to underneath. And you don't worry about weeds, you know, worry about anything else, you just keep the top of them.
Something like that, if you would. It's something that goes off, or if this is reporting, you have some berms going back and forth, you have some trees and you have some murals as they go down, that's that little way, but all the way on the one side, that's to circle one out.
Well, that's great.
Me, can you hold that towards the cameras? Can you see that up there?
Yeah.
No. Yes. But move it over a little. Okay.
That's, that's roughly what I was assuming.
Okay.
Let me say that, making it flat, if you make it flat, um, when it don't like it all flat is, is allow the water to run right out of fourteen into the barns.
Oh, the cameras do that, that's the problem.
If somebody ever hasn't
We saw it though.
At least
Thank you.
That's all that stuff, putting it in building. And then, um, and then I like the the weeping grass type, the grass is supposed to lay like that and say, I think we had some demonstrations last time we showed during that meeting. So that way it doesn't look like weeds, like, like that glass.
So, let's recap what we're at. We're adjusting the berms with the gap. Correct. Uh, the berms would be planted with weeping grass, with ars and leggins. The west side. You got the north side.
And that was planted on the same, same on the north and same on the south around the upper part. I mean, the upper part is what we're talking about. No real berms on the lower part.
No, because we don't want to dam off any water down.
Right.
And we were talking about the, uh, for a second about the trees that are existing along fourteen. I don't know, we were debating whether it was deer damage or whether that was salt spray damage for the ones that are
For deer, I watched, I watched you move.
Okay, uh, so, but you had an experience Okay, uh, so, but you had an experience that with the. Uh, with the trees you planted along South Shore, those seems seem to be deer resistant or. Or disliked, one of the other.
So they're not standing in the road and eating, or very.
Yeah, yeah. To the extent that those may be more deer resistant, okay, then you can use those for a fall, that might be a good choice.
They're the same trees, to be honest.
Well, they're the same trees.
Yeah, I, once, once you probably.
In the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe.
I know, I I'm joking.
Maybe Dave and Joan watered them for me on that.
Well, we. I've heard a lot of complaints about the years, so. Especially for my wife. All right, uh, then let's continue going on here, so. Northwest, south, weeping grass, armbidies. The east side discussed. But waiting on dredge material.
The slopes, yes, but the perimeters, I think we're also talking about the east perimeter having. Some pines established or a.
Yeah, as you can see, we have them, we have them spread across the whole front, and now we're gonna be. Peas them, so there're gonna be plenty of them to spread along that side, there we go.
On the east side.
Or the north.
Yeah, east.
I'm talking about on the east, we're right up against the trees there, um, I did go, I didn't know if you had a chance, but if you go there.
I wasn't, I wasn't allowed.
Well, even from, you can't, you can't see the water, even with the wood coverage, I can't see the water tower. From down there. You know what I mean, with just the tree coverage. And now, and you're welcome to see it if you want yourself, I mean, but, but uh. But yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you're still in the woods. In the road looking down.
Yeah, so you can't see the bottom, right?
I don't, um, yeah, that's where I know, that's where I don't know where they.
So this is the backside of here, so you're not even seeing any of the belly, that, where you see that's the top of the parking lot. So you can't see, you won't even, I bet you'd be barely able to see the roofs that I.
I think what's still, I. Thinking is. If you. Planted pines on that property, it's gonna be across creek, right, across the.
Across, and again, it's, um, that is way low, like you can't see, you can't see that from where you're.
But if you the trees planted. Here, pines, those are gonna grow, so you won't see, you won't even see this.
Right. They would have to, they would have to, it would have to be a pine tree that grows thirty feet tall in order to block that.
Yeah. Spruce could do that for you.
I think that's not a little outrageous to ask.
No, I don't.
Yeah, you know, I just be.
Plan them small, but I mean.
I'm playing them inside the woods.
It would take time, but yes, it would get there. My prophecy is a prime example of that. I heard you got to dock the trees.
No, I I get it, what I'm saying is, is it's it's a wooded area though, right now, if you just plant them inside the woods, they're not gonna. Overtaken, grow up through there, or they're just gonna.
No, you have to remove some of the. Some of the old walls and stuff.
Yeah.
And plant in. In between. In between existing trees, yeah. Yeah, I think part of the thought is that those existing large trees aren't gonna survive forever. So can something be planted in there so that when they have had their day, there's something. That will screen that area. From any of the residents up on hillside.
I just wish that we could meet up there and I'll show you what I'm talking about, because unfortunately, the.
Well, we could, I'd be up for that.
The the property, the property line, of where you're talking about, that's, that's where you can see the grating is, had, you're catching the water, so how do I plant? Into the woods on somebody else's property, I mean, the only way you're gonna block that is by planting them at the top of the hill. You know what I mean, like Jamie would have to, and what I'm saying is that. Eh, if we go up there, I mean, I I would love to show you from where you're taking the picture, I even go down there with a stick that's painted, and I'm telling you that. If you're on, if you're on, if you're not on that side of the road. There's no way that people on the other side of the road can look down and see that.
But you understand what the, well. There's two things, understanding what the existing topography is, is one thing, but we all know that the. Topography is gonna change as you.
Correct, that lower area.
Areas for those two buildings.
That lower area is kind of, and that's, and where where the storage area is, is that lowest spot. You know what I mean, so that it is hidden, un- unbelievably hidden.
Can we reserve on that until?
I guess, yeah, until it's done, and then say, hey, look, yeah, I don't know if you guys can do that or not, but I'm saying. Build it, and then if you see it and you go, hey, look, it can, can it front there?
You can put it. Or the condition that um. At a construction, the planning board. May require.
Screening along the east side.
Yeah, let's.
Yeah, instead of making it something that might not, I don't wanna plant trees for something that we don't.
Yeah, because we don't know what the topography, how it's gonna change, etc.
That'd be fine.
That's for sure, okay.
Any trees that fail to grow sufficiently can spring the property. Shall be properly replaced with trees that similar size and variety as existing trees. Tree dies on it.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that we might move that into an area of the conditions where. There's ongoing conditions, as opposed to that one, that one really is, is uh.
Not in the checklist you're doing.
It's not in the right way, okay, it it needs to be done right away, it's just an ongoing maintenance, sort of thing, sort of like keeping weeds down.
We could reorganize those. Yeah, we have to use. Okay. The low buildings, uh, the excess. The excess drive and the outside material storage shall be fully planted in grass, which. Right, will be maintained in height parameters in eight inches in accordance with maintenance code, probably one dash seven. What applies to the whole village.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I I would assume that that covers that weeping grass.
I think what you were envisioning, we'll saw it, that'll work.
Well, I didn't know, i- is it your intention to take the parking area and make that stone? Okay, and so the area outside of that area is, it's gonna be stone for the for the outdoor parking. It, it would seem to me that.
You want some vegetation.
Now, just covering that with grass and keeping the grass made, hey, was probably the easiest and best, easiest for you, okay?
I I understand.
It's gonna be largely out of you, so I don't know the aesthetic of that.
Right, no, I I I get it, I so much. I understand.
Moving weed growth to maintenance to ongoing makes sense as well.
Long as you agree on, we can reorganize.
Yeah.
Well, next one, excessive weed growth in all areas, shall be. Proximities. Weed growth, that's a. Sorry, that's.
What's your definition of a weed?
Right, my grass, my home is mostly weed.
Is it excessive?
Ours is.
Uh, I think you know, I think you.
I think that makes sense to me.
You need to kind of, buddy, excessive, I thought we were talking height. I'm sure you're not talking crabgrass versus.
Exactly, yeah, or down the left.
So we could just say, uh.
Isn't that part of the maintenance code now?
Right, that's part of.
It is.
So.
So we can eliminate that, right?
I think so.
Uh, I haven't read the maintenance code one four one dash seven, but I presume it covers. A lot of ugly things.
It says noxious weeds are growth prohibited, no person shall maintain, plant, or permit, terminate on any private property, any noxious weeds or growth.
Those will be fine.
Noxious weeds and growth are grass, brush, rubbish, or leaves of a nature which is a fire or health hazard. Including lawns in excess of six inches and. Yeah, that's what's posted online.
It covers a lot of things on this document, doesn't it?
Yeah, did you say six inches, Gene?
So I said it, I built this up online, so that might be the old one.
Yeah, it's the old one, because we love ten inches. We amended it, I believe, for ten.
And we need to.
Correct it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought we put the new one online.
In my copy, it says eight inches. Okay, um.
We'll get rid of the weeds.
A signage shall be erected entrance to the area in compliance with code one ninety dash twenty six, indicating that. The storage facility is private property, will use only by Martin. Thai sites employees, we agreed to that. And if anybody needs to go downward, they have to be accompanied. Each building will, including man door for emergency escape purposes and a window, the man door will be located at the far end of the building away from the large. Interest. Again, that was certainly discussed. Lighting will be limited to only that required by the New York Building Code, section. One zero zero eight. Point two point one, which will be directed downward and not directing toward neighboring areas. The lighting boards have no lighting, but when I met with them to.
Yeah, they have the required state.
Yes.
Modify that to.
Okay.
For no expansion of the field area outside that required by. Uh, D E C, in their speed, split process. Shall be allowed without prior submission and approval by the planning board. Areas of usage shall be limited to only will show on the approved site plan.
And in that regard, I think it's gonna be important for, because you're not gonna be up there all the time, okay, you're gonna keep your own people up there. It'd be important for that to be staked out, so that they know what those dimensions, those parameters are.
All the areas, the only areas are stone, you know, I mean, the others are gonna be all.
Okay.
You know, here you go, that's.
Yeah. If if that's where it's devised, great.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Store. Yeah, I'm not going too fast, just pulling the slowdown. Number six is stored materials or stacked equipment may not exceed the height of eight feet, and so at. All times you maintain in a neat and orderly fashion, that's basically from the old one. No outside storage shall be permitted on the upper level, that was from zoning.
That should probably include vehicle parking and trailers too, right? So it's not just, I don't know what storage means, but.
I I would agree with that. That would could have been that.
That's our only, uh, reason why they didn't put the one one tax, that we're not parking vehicles correct up there, but. The trailers could still be parked up there.
Before the buildings are done.
Even after.
No. I go back to what zoning said.
You can, you can look, it doesn't say anything about boat trailers, the only thing we can do is the RVs and and the others. Boat trailers, it would be, and the reason why I say that is if, um, if we're gonna have something outside that's normal. You you wouldn't put that all the way to the bottom for somebody, in a normal case, it's probably not gonna be out there anyway, everything's gonna be inside. But if somebody's picking something up, you know, where they don't, you know, to unlock the buildings and do the, that's where we park it, we wouldn't have them go through the gate. Downstairs to get down to the lower buildings, um, so that's, that's the reason that the upper for the upper trailer. If you look, it was only, you know. It's like, it can't be.
Temporary.
Yes, basically.
Okay, nothing would be regularly parked out there as sure as, and stored.
Yeah, because the zoning said, um, no lights, we've already, no boats, no cars and trucks, or cameras parked on the upper level.
Right, the trailers were, boat trailers were okay, I couldn't, I couldn't park all the other stuff.
Tom Jones, just to make sure.
Yeah, in the minutes, it's there, it says.
I I don't have quarrel if if there's a trailer left out because the customer's gonna pick it up, okay, but. My concern would be that, not only have we created storage buildings, we've still got all of the outside storage.
Yeah, I mean, if if you look for most of it, it's already. You know, I mean, once you put the bar, now you can't really put too many trailers, so it doesn't like this, it's like a, yeah, huge. Huge point, I just don't want to.
Trailers require registration, how about registered trailers?
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, it's, it's.
If you had empty boat trail. Like you had up there in this pasture. Are you anticipating that you'd wanna have those trailers?
Yeah, that's right, so, so if there was the barn here, right, and then the other barn here, and there's a little area here, we could put a couple here. That way people can easily access them, instead of having to look through a gate all the way to the bottom, that's what I'm saying, it isn't. You can, I can't put the trailers like that, unless the barns are there, it's very minimal to the trailers that you're talking about, I'm just trying, I guess I'm just trying to be. Overly honest.
I I just pulled up the minutes and my memory is flawless.
So what, what did the minutes say?
Minutes say. Uh, this is zoning work conditions, no outside lighting, which they modified, no marine equipment storage. No parking of boats, cars, RVs outside the building at the top level. Uh, marine construction equipment restricted to the lower level parking lot, so we're up. Having trouble here is, they say no marine equipment storage. And we may define that, like verify that to be what was.
In my construction, if I can, it's hard.
Yeah, one twenty one dash.
Um, so I will run that by Tom Jones and give that clarification, okay?
Yeah, I don't have quarrel with temporary. Yeah, I don't have to quarrel with temporarys. You can, yeah.
Well, lucky you have.
Uh, on the other hand, I don't want to cross something what somebody was saying.
Well, we can't.
We can't.
We we can try. We try. Storage, but later. No outside storage. We change it up.
Uh, of vehicles or. No outside storage of vehicles or trailers permitted on the upper, upper level. Uh.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it, do you make sense just to leave that also there since it's already in the zoning?
Because it's going to do with zoning. Conditions that are going to go with the property, so.
Oh, zoning doesn't go, but what they said doesn't matter?
Well, no, what they said.
We have covered.
Okay.
Incorporate what they said.
Okay. Number seven is to match zoning.
Yeah. I'm guessing.
Outdoors. Outdoor storage, this number eight. For the lower approved area of the property shall be limited. Only to the following materials, equipment, and to be designated. Materials, equipment, area, um, in, in your. Contract, and you are one of the call. Automobile, automobiles, trucks, not including tractor trailers. Or eighteen wheelers, uh, or campers. Uh, recreational vehicles. Marine equipment is signed in one forty one dash four. That would be. U S and docs and.
Okay.
Number, uh, the next one, marine construction equipment, including trucks, not including tractor trailers. Or eighteen wheelers, craves. Backhoes, barges, island drivers of any type. And commercial trailers and such.
So with this being said, where can I park? It's registered. My tractor trailer. Trailer. I understand you wouldn't be taking it down that driveway anyway, so I get that. But we load, we load our boat show stuff into it and stuff like that, into them trailers to take it to the boat shows. And things like that, so. Where? Where would you like to see it?
On the marina.
Uh, you'd like to see it down at the marina?
Sure, yeah.
Is there, with the four buildings, is there a place to put it?
Well, it's not going to be there all the time, but, but yes, there would be along the backside, you could back it along that. That building there. At the top, I can pull in and back along there.
Is that, I mean, do you have that over the top of the, the shore?
Yeah, that, I mean, it's, we drive, you drive over the shore every day.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. That's, that's fine, you just can't have anything permanently there, so you can't dig it up and repair it.
Right.
But the reason why I ask that is, is where do I put it, I mean, sure, if you want to go along the road down that. You know, at the marina. Um, because it can't have it in a perfect, we're trying, the whole reason for this is to get the flow of the marina.
Wow, what's the height of the trail?
It would be, it would be behind that barn, so you couldn't see it, it would be lower than the on fourteen, or it's thirteen six, I'm sorry.
Thirteen six, okay, because your peak is at twenty six, the east at fourteen, correct? Look, I just noticed last time.
Eve is, Eve is sixteen.
Sixteen?
Top of the door is fourteen.
Okay. Okay, so you're not going to see that?
You wouldn't, I just am trying, it's, it's saying it, so I feel like somebody's saying, hey, look, we don't want to see that. If I hide it around the back of it everywhere, but.
Yeah, I'm just thinking aloud, I don't know what's going to be seeable from hillside. Over there, okay.
So what about the?
Well, I. I'm assuming that the other building, I'm going to call it building two.
If I jump in here a second. I will have to run it past. Uh, Tom John, because I took that list from what they gave me.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll have to talk to Tom.
Yeah, I just, being honest, I just don't know, you know what I mean?
I I'm just being honest that. When I went and asked for a certification on terms.
Yeah, if you can't, if you can't go low.
That was the list that they gave me.
Yeah, yeah, it just, it, it just came to mind just because I'm saying, all right, eight says, oh, you can't put it down there, which I knew it couldn't go down there. But it's got to be over to go somewhere, so, not when you guys tell me where it is.
So you, you talk about. Where were? Which building were you looking at putting it behind?
It would be behind. I'm going to call it number one, maybe, or?
Number one.
No, upper, upper.
Upper level north.
Behind.
Correct, upper level north.
Maybe you can put a now on that, too.
Yeah, so I probably will write that, when we take it to the boat shows, it's better to see it than a rap.
I was teasing.
Yeah, I know, but it, but that.
Well, is there any code, uh, for trailers, score, and village?
Most likely have to be ready.
Is there any code about, uh, parking a tractor trailer in your?
In the village.
Is it licensed?
Yes.
No, uh, I mean, it'd be licensed, it'd be his. It'd just be his, I mean, you have to give me more context before I could really answer it formally.
Trails is, is a motor vehicle.
Right, I, I, this is probably a new point because this is not a stored trailer, it's not something that, you know, I'm not storing it for you. You know what I mean, it's my own vehicle. You know, so a little different, I guess, maybe, but I want to make sure I brought it up so somebody, if they do it, it's not, oh, well, now he's. Trying to sneak something in, but, um, yeah, I wouldn't be keeping somebody else's stuff there. And there is a gentleman that drives truck right across from a marina, you know, and he pulls, he pulls into my marina and backs the whole thing, leaves it right in the driveway.
I know, that's why I didn't think of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is, I just looked it up.
Number one, over.
There's just a lot of talk about tractor trailers in number eight, now, like, like, why? Yep.
I think it's because of.
Because it's up there right now.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Created. Okay. I will check.
So just so I understand that third bullet. Marine construction equipment. Including trucks. Am I trying to understand that, but not including tractor trailers? Cranes, backhoes, barges, blah, blah, blah?
Marine construction equipment including trucks.
But, but, but not included. I'm, I'm inserting the word but, okay, is that proper or not?
What's allowed are trucks, but not tractor trailers.
Not tractor trailers, cranes, backhoes, barges, pile drivers.
So we probably should put that in parentheses.
Which?
Not including tractor trailers or eighteen wheelers, because cranes, backhoes, barges, all those are.
All those are, okay, so the, the closed parent stops after wheelers.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you for that.
Yeah, that was what I understood.
You can put marine equipment in here, but we're going to eliminate all marine equipment.
Well, that's why I was asking the question.
Yeah.
My bad. Okay, number eight.
Number nine.
Number nine, too. No outdoor storage of unusable materials, equipment, or supplies, nor any vehicles in a state of disrepair. Shall be permitted. Uh, a lawyer suggested that we include, uh, limited numbers.
Well, our code is no more than one unlicensed vehicle.
Right.
Unlicensed or unregistered?
Says unlicensed.
Huh.
Uh, okay, you're, you're okay, I'm all right. Okay. Number. Yeah. No further development or use of a property that is not included in the approved site plan will be allowed without. A request for modification of the site plan being submitted and approved by the. Relative planning board prior to such additional development. So, while Thomas Kevin, you've got that. I understand. Number eleven, we approve resolution and condition are to be added in their entire, including the site plan. So all the landscaping, all that has to do with these. But. Upon the completion of all necessary conditions, the applicant will provide the planning board with a mylar. Reproducible copy of the values. Site plan and a copy of the SWIP for the planning board chair to view and sign off on. Report. We, uh, we should insert the ability for that. In other words. We've been up to my art before.
All right, I can get you, I can get you that.
All right. We have that. It's a bulletin that's written on the meeting condition.
A question for us, what is the difference between number four? No expansion filled areas outside that required that the D C, uh. Will be allowed without prior submission approval and number. Ten. No further development or use of the property that's not included. I, should we merge those two, or how are they different?
Number one.
Are they required?
Number four, uh.
I mean, it, it's already codified that. The further development of any property can't be done. Right?
You got a good point, you know.
Yeah, number, number four is in your.
We just put in your code. We're, we're.
I mean.
Um, there may be a subtle difference. No expansion of the filled area. Uh, okay.
Yeah.
Has to do with the land, the actual fill. As. What's permitted by the D C. Okay? Number ten is no further development. I mean.
No.
No more buildings. Something that goes on. The land versus. How you.
Or you intend to use it.
Well, or how you've. Graded it, how you've.
Thank you, yes.
There is a difference.
Like you said, I I agree with what you're saying, number ten, you have to come back to the judge. And no matter what, you got to get a building from that, so number, number ten is covered on your regular and. Really, number four is as well, even though I do agree with, they're all different, one's telling me what I can do with the grading of it. And the other one's telling me what I can do with the use of it. Or, or the expansion of like a building.
I don't have a problem with repetition.
Well, they're two different things.
Well, I know, but I'm saying, even if it's.
To the extent there is any redundancy, you don't care.
Yeah, right.
All right, just.
Is there any? Speed?
I'm good.
I am as well.
Okay. Okay.
I guess my only suggestion would be that if the, if a landscaping plan is ultimately put together. And. And these details of what's included by way of landscaping is on that plan. We don't need.
All I'm asking is a little, save me a little bit of money, you guys are. You're telling me what I can plan, what I can't. So what are I going to pay to have another landscaping plan? You've already, you've already told me what I can do and what I can't, that's, I, I mean, that's just a question, I'm just saying, I've spent a lot of money. And now to, to say, hey, look, you know, you got to spend a couple thousand dollars to have something drawn.
Well, I, I think.
One of ten words.
It says this has to be incorporated, all of these have to be incorporated in the site plan, so.
Yeah, don't get yourself.
Has to be.
Right.
Site plans.
Like if I show some, I'm assuming that. And I'm just asking that. A site plan is pretty much already done, right, we, we had that there, but it has to be updated with the buildings correctly. But then if I say in this area is going to be.
If you just.
Exactly, like we said, in words, it's going to be the weeping grass and then like mountains.
It's got to show it on the site plan, yeah.
I understand, okay.
Same.
Right, I just.
And be sure, be sure to include the drawing you did tonight.
You got it, you got, I'm going to leave that with Bill Lukey, he's going to be responsible for that masterpiece.
Well, she gave a signature on it, made me work on it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I, I know that we're going to reorganize this.
Yeah.
But I want. If we're happy with the conditions, I would like somebody to move. Uh, to. As is at the top of that list.
So you would like a motion that we get preliminary approval of Warren's tight side site plan, construction application for the construction of three sixty by one twenty storage buildings and one one hundred by sixty storage building. And then L C R is own district and an R zone district. To be used for boat and boat trailer storage as permitted by a special use permit, subject to the following conditions.
And we'll. Add that on to the record, once we organize it. Okay?
And we will add on to it once it is well organized. And then this needs to be forwarded to. The engineers.
Then the.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
Well, we need a motion. For what you just said, so I need a second.
I'll see, do we, do we need a seeker work before we do a preliminary?
No.
So that's just for the time.
Okay, because the engineers are going to.
Right.
First, Mike, it's hostage.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Uh, and the only thing I would insert is, you know, subject to. Submission of, you know, of final drawings and plans. As one of the conditions. I guess.
No, that's already, yeah.
It's already, never mind.
Well, all right, so I got a second for you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Are you or not? Okay, we're one step closer.
Is this being enough to get started with?
Engineer?
You're a video.
Yes.
We will get you the formal.
I, I kind of know what that means.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Matt, I'm sorry if, uh.
The. Asma Hall of, uh, pole barns?
Yes. I. Pole barn up there, is that right? All right. So.
Yeah, you're all set, thank you.
Thank you very much. Tell me next.
Next week, do we know what the next time is?
Next time.
It's going to depend on.
Weeks.
Talking earlier, it depends on how fast the engineers work.
Oh.
So, so. Really, it's now almost in your court.
Yeah.
To.
And our court, we can.
Well, well.
Our end.
Then our end will review it. And then. Go to D E C and then tag to us.
Yeah, but in the meantime, we're going to be feeding Brandon the, the list of, of things and the priorities, okay? We're going to be making this document that we worked on tonight look pretty.
Yes.
The night.
But, but as far as.
He'll be getting going.
What he needs to get going is. He's got a list there, but we'll get him the formal list.
I.
So he, he might, um. Appreciate approved minutes ahead of the next scheduled meeting, maybe. Could we, can we approve minutes?
Only.
No, only at a, only at a meeting.
Only at a public meeting, okay, thank you.
So my question. So my question is, if I tell you I have all this ready tomorrow. Like, I'm under the understanding that I have to have this to get, to get final, everything in here to get my final approval, so if I tell you that I have it all, can you schedule it? And then I bring that in then, right?
Well, you need this one.
So I guess that's just what I'm confused, you know?
You know what, Brandon, the process, what'll happen is you'll, you'll call your engineer, let's say Perfect World, your engineer came back and the plan's arrayed tomorrow, I would then call a few engineering firms. To get a village engineer on staff, then the village engineer would do his recommendations for changes, or he would say it's perfect, whatever their recommendation is, they would write up that recommendation. And at the same time, you would submit that, uh, our recommendations plus your plans to the D C, then the D C would send back either compliance or changes. Then again, that goes back to our engineer, our engineer reviews it, as long as everything is good, once we get from our engineer and the D C the go ahead, we schedule you for final. So if it lined up perfectly, it was on a Wednesday prior to a meeting, I would schedule it for that Monday, if it doesn't, then it lines up whenever it lines up.
So when we're talking about D C.
Yep.
The grading plan. That you guys have now was approved, that is the approved SWIP, and that is approved to D C.
But it has to be modified because.
Yeah, it's just if it gets modified at all, it might not get modified, and if it doesn't, and Luke Skinnell is like, hey, you're good to keep going, just keep going, uh, with the, the SWIP as is, but it might get modified slightly.
Right, that's why I'm saying, I don't believe that it is modifications, because them areas. Were flat for buildings, I mean, so that, that was already in the calculations.
Your square footage on your buildings changed from your first plan to this plan. So this plan has more square footage.
Right. The other one had three down below and had other ones on top, so.
Kevin and I.
Yeah, no, I got it.
So. Um.
They have so that's the final.
Yeah, that may, right, could change. Or their D C's determination.
Okay. Uh, the seeker will be reviewed, updated, and assessed, Eric?
Yeah, so that's one of the things I'm gonna ask the engineer to do as well, is to look at the seeker that we have in front of you. Um, and the commercial parking lot have the other plan in it, so as long as this one, uh, the SWIP is in there, I'll have them give you recommendations as well for that.
All right. Okay. This is.
So, can I have a clarification, please, Kevin? So, is this a final approval by the planning board that it then falls into your? Uh, wheelhouse to enforce? So, you're saying the conditions, so the conditions would be on the site plan, so let's say you guys said that his buildings, whatever sticks for the final. Um, all those conditions have to be met before he could use it, get the C of C and start using it, whatever those conditions are. So like when someone builds a new house, if you guys said that the house had to be painted blue before I can give a C of O, I have to meet that condition prior to.
Well, this was a preliminary.
Yeah.
Get the engineering and all that, then we'll go to final. Okay?
Okay.
Friends?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Matt.
I know.
Your turn.
I think my dog got tired. I had a dog, you guys saw.
Give us a brief overview of your project.
Well, I have a property next door that's, uh, basically an approved site plan, or a, a property to build a house on. And just looking to build a house there, I submitted the plan. Uh, it's a close to two thousand square foot, I don't think it's as big as what it says on there. But, uh, it fits well on the property. And I kinda got it sitting on an angle because of the. There's a hill there to the west side. And I don't, I don't want to have it parallel with the road, because if I did, I'd have an issue with trying to be drainage around the house. So it sits better kind of on an angle, and that's, uh, that's the way I'm gonna put it.
So you still have fifty feet between.
It'll be at least fifty, I mean, I just put that on there just because that's, that's a setback.
You're talking from that back corner to the property?
Yeah, the fifty foot is that buffer you guys put on his property, that you guys said he had to have a fifty foot buffer for clearing.
Right, yeah, but, but the, the back right corner up against that hill you're talking about, Matt, what's that distance look like?
Fourteen?
Well, it's ninety feet plus a hundred, uh, plus fifty, so it's two, I can't remember how long that lot is, uh, two seventy-five, maybe?
I was just looking at the distance from that back corner of the house to the west property lot.
Oh, it was, it was like, it, it's, at the minimum, it's gonna be the twelve, the twelve foot five, or what, what, what is it, whatever it is.
Okay, sure, I can see that.
Says fourteen on the site, on the.
Yeah, it's gonna, I, I'm not gonna be anywhere near the, uh, so when I do an ASBILT, so when a house gets put on, I have to meet all the criteria setbacks. I will definitely not be in the issue where I gotta go to the zoning board.
Okay.
I've been doing this a little bit.
So one of the issues Matt ran into up there, and I, I don't know if you guys looked at the site, there's a lot of water that comes down that hill, so when he gets digging out to place the house, he's gonna have to shift it a little bit when he goes to place it.
That's why I kinda put it near that high side on the west, because I don't wanna contend with the water coming at the house.
Yeah. So.
When the people come down Lake Road, they're gonna see the whole front of the house driving, pretty much, you know what I mean, like, when they come by, they're gonna see the front of the house instead of having to turn their head. Because it's not gonna be parallel to the Lake Road, it's, it's actually gonna look really nice, I think, I'm pretty happy with it.
All right.
Matt, uh, is that wet all year round? Is there a spring up there?
No, the, the water comes from, so there's a property up off of Santel Road, I went, I walked back there. And basically, there's a pond back there, and the water should be going towards the pond, but the, uh. Well, the drainage that goes there is all plugged. So what that does, it forces it towards me, so what I was gonna do is, uh, either put like a French drain across there for the water to hit it. Pipe it to where normally going right now towards the, uh, road, uh, haven't decided on how to handle that situation yet, but, um. That, that's my thought, you know, I mean, once I start digging in there a little bit more, then I'll know what the right thing to do is.
And this is no basement, right? Down slant?
No, it's gonna have a basement.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gonna have a basement. But if I put it parallel with the road, uh, Lake Road, it's ninety feet, so that means I got fifteen feet roughly on either side. I can't get the drainage around the house properly, because then I would have to build retaining walls and all that stuff, so. The way that house fits, fits the way that I show you guys, and, uh, it'll work really well, sometimes you just can't, you can't fight it, you just gotta go with what's there.
All right, so the. Garage is a three car garage. And. The front. Is the, what, what were the, the north?
Northwest facing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when the people come down from the, uh, they're heading east on Lake Road, they're gonna just barely turn their heads and see the front, the whole front of the house. Like I said, if you, if you drive by my house right now to see the front of my house, you really gotta turn your head to see it. Because it's parallel, you know, but this one here, you're gonna see it just driving down, it's, is that's the way that hill aligns it, it just the way, this is the way it is. To make it work.
And we don't need to remind you, 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 uh, you're gonna preserve all of the trees that are still living back in there, to the extent.
I got a few dead ones in my front yard that they probably need to come down, but I try to save as much as I can.
Yeah.
And. But as far as landscaping, that won't be done in conjunction with your own house?
My own house? Uh, I have a sidewalk coming in probably Wednesday. You know, I'm just gonna put a few plants around the house, I guess, and have some, you know, I guess.
I thought you were gonna say that you were gonna do the landscaping all at once for both houses.
Well, my house will be done first before that house.
Yeah.
Cause that house isn't up yet, so I, I, I'm doing mine now. So, yeah, I mean, we're gonna do, it's gonna look nice, that's all I can tell you.
Uh, uh, don't doubt that, I just did. Direct meter. You might think so, I don't know.
Matt, are you building this for someone?
Well, it's gonna be basically for my parents.
Okay. Good, not a spy.
No, not, not, not at the moment, no, my, my parents are over in there, yes. Yeah.
All of the questions?
No.
None.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Same here.
All right.
Should we ask the public? Well, we have to ask.
Okay, you got, uh. Kevin, or where's Casey, Casey? Uh, you want a comment, mute yourself, please?
Casey's the reporter.
Hold on.
Title to a.
Oh, no, I'm just.
Two public.
Pointing that.
It would be A I.
Now, she's the one you see writes the notes.
Okay.
Every.
No com- no comment, but thank you.
Well, thanks, Casey, but, you know, she's still a person, she could come.
Oh, no.
Just.
All right.
No, you knew.
All right, there is no. Person here. And Casey has no questions, so. Can we have a motion?
I move that we recommend to these, does this need to go to zoning? No?
No.
No.
Will this be final?
I recommend, uh, that we approve preliminary site plan. To construct a two thousand one hundred thirty-four square foot residential structure for plans, let me get this. At seven nine seven eight Lake Road.
Seconded.
So. Second?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion is passed, Matt, when you get your, uh, staff plans, we'll see you.
Okay, see you in a couple weeks.
Thanks for your patience.
No, no problem, buddy. It was good, it was fun, I'll see you.
Okay, um.
Take care.
I am not gonna be here in two weeks.
Okay. So.
And then it's.
The nineteenth.
It's correct.
It's in red there, what's it?
Fifteen, red, what would that be?
I have nothing.
A. Victoria Day.
Victoria Day in Canada.
The fifty-first date.
Yeah.
All right. So you won't be here. Uh. We won't be here, well, Brandon, it hurts. Actually, let's doubt my words. We'll start. Um, engineer will have to renew everything first anyway. So. Thank you all for all your work and time, I appreciate it, I always appreciate you too. And, uh, who was? Come on. Mother thanks you, my father thanks you, my sister thanks you.
I'll move to approve.
Or I'll move to.
Sure. The other A word.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, B Street's open?
That is correct.
Have a good night, guys.